Good evening, everyone. I'm Darren Schaefer from the Chairman of the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board. We're meeting this evening, July 27th for the monthly meeting. We do have a quorum this evening. Do we have a statement for hybrid in-person virtual meeting?
Yes. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note, this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, please click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, going over the agenda items, do we have any additions, deletions, or revisions on the agenda this evening? That noted. Do you have any disclosure of conflicts of interest?
Terry Atwell. Darren, I don't have a conflict of interest, but I will disclose again and in any other future meeting. I see that on the One Horse Ranch application, this is done by Alan Brandon Drews, my brother's company. As I said last time, I don't discuss his business. I don't have anything to do with his business. I have no financial interest in his business. So I will be hearing that one because I do not have a conflict.
Thank you. Any disclosure of external context discussions? That noted. So everybody had a chance to read over the minutes from the last meeting? And if so, do I have a motion to approve those meetings? Notes.
Brian Walker, so moved.
Terry Atwell, second.
A motion has been made. It has been seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Sign. Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to do a roll call.
Yes, we do. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. John DeGrand is not present.
Terry Atwell?
Here.
Donna Getzmann?
Here.
David Wolfe is not here. Randy Hutchins on Zoom is not present. Darren Schaefer?
Here.
Rebecca Barton on Zoom?
Here.
Brian Walker?
Here.
And Jason Cooper on Zoom?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board reports. Do we have Board of County Commissioners actions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff. There were three applications approved by the Board of County Commissioners on July 28th. They're all for conditional use permits for oversized accessory buildings. One was at 19910 Pepper Tree Lane, another at 28640 West 207th Street, and another at 33785 West 167th Street. All these conditional use permits were approved by the Board of County Commissioners on July 28th. There was another application that was on this agenda, if you recall, for a preliminary and final plat for 175th and Edgerton. That was continued at this previous board meeting and is on tonight's agenda. So that's all for the Board of County Commissioners actions.
Do we have any planning commission activities?
Sean Pennley, I can provide a quick update on that, planning commission activities. At the June 28th meeting, there were election of officers. The Planning Commission elected Chris Iliff as the chair for the Planning Commission, and the vice chair is Roger Mason. They also discussed upcoming planning priorities for the next year. There was a meeting scheduled for last night. That meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. So the next meeting will be, I believe, August 23rd. Does that sound correct? Next meeting for the Planning Commission, August 23rd.
Okay, business before the board this evening. The first one, this applicant is requesting a continuance to the August 24th meeting. That's application number SW22-192-PDP/FDP, Preliminary and Final Development Plan, 27200 West 157th Street. So do I have a motion to continue that?
Terry Atwell moved to continue.
Second?
Donna Getzmann, second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of continuing that, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman. Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff, I'll just note that that application, so that with the board continuing that application to August 24th, that will be held in this meeting room at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Next application, number SW22-220-PP/FPMC, Preliminary and Final Plat, 175th and Edgerton Road. Have a presentation?
Thank you, Karen Miller. This application was continued from the June zoning board meeting. The purpose of this application is to divide 149 acres into a 16-acre lot at the corner of 175th and Edgerton, and then the remainder is 137 acres. This requires a preliminary and a final plat to be approved in order to divide this property in accordance with the zoning and subdivision regulations. And as you see on this slide here, you can see that it's in agricultural use. There's no home on this property. There is an accessory building existing, as I mentioned, located at the southwest corner of 175th and Edgerton Road with RUR zoning. On June 22nd, the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board held a public hearing on the application, and they continued this for the reason that several members of the public commented and expressed concerns regarding the accuracy of the dimensions and the lot areas contained on the plat documents. So the purpose of this continuance is to provide planning staff an opportunity to consult with legal staff and supply more information regarding the issues discussed, and also to provide the applicant and surrounding property owners an opportunity to meet and to provide an update at the next zoning board meeting. So in the interim, the applicant reached out to the adjacent property owners, had a discussion with them, met on the property with the surveyor, and all parties looked at the manner in which the survey was executed. I have talked with the Kenokis and also the Toplikers, and they are in agreement with the survey as it stands. They accept the survey. And also attached to your memo for tonight is a letter from Jane Kenoki agreeing with all of this, that they agree with the plat. So I have to commend the applicant, the surveyor, and the property owners. They did a great job of meeting, working this out, acting as neighbors and as part of a community. So I thought it was very impressive. And so there, as far as I understand tonight, there is no objection to the survey. Additionally, in the interim, planning staff touched base with the, with legal staff, and they also reiterated what planning was saying, that the question was, what's the responsibility of the zoning board regarding a plat application? And that's to review the proposed preliminary and final plats for compliance with the county zoning and subdivision regulations. And just as a note, mediating lot line disputes is not the responsibility of the zoning board. But it was good to have some extra time in and just get an understanding among neighbors. Another question is, is the county liable for any errors on the survey? And legal's response was, no, the county, including the zoning board, is not liable or responsible for the errors made by surveyors or others. The plat documents, in this case, were prepared and sealed by a professional land surveyor, licensed in the state of Kansas. And furthermore, the county surveyor has looked at the plat and did not find any issues with it. And so that's just a little bit of extra information going forward, just, you know, for your own edification. I also attached more information, if you're interested, to this memo just about the nature of the legal description, moving from an allocuat parts legal description to a that meets and bounds legal description attached to a platted lot. So you can read that. Feel free to call me if you have any other questions about the surveying or the plat. And I can either answer them or get you in touch with our county surveyor. So with all of that, the staff continues to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat for a two-lot plat to be known as 175th and Edgerton, subject to the stipulations located on page two of the memo. And all of those are fairly standard stipulations. The reason for planning's recommendation is on page four of our memo, and that is that planning staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plats because the proposed lots comply with the county zoning and subdivision regulations. And if the zoning board is interested, on page four is also a proposed motion. And with that, I'll take questions.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions for Ms. Miller?
No questions, Brian Walker. I just appreciate the extra efforts and questions and education around this process. It did get a little interesting last time, and it sounds like everybody went through the appropriate process to resolve.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, planning, there's always something new to learn. So it's always interesting. So thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, the applicant can make a presentation if they would like, or you can just agree with what Ms. Miller?
The applicant is Scott Wesley, and he's available on Zoom tonight.
Can you guys hear me? Oh. I have nothing else. Karen did a better job than I would have. So thank you for all the hard work on her side. Neighbors and I got together. We've got everything under control. So we do appreciate it, I guess. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Are there any questions of the applicant from the zoning board?
None.
All right, this time we can open this up to public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this one? Okay, that noted. Is there any further questions by the zoning board of staff, applicant, or the public? That noted, this time we'll close the public comments, discussion of the application, or does somebody want to make a motion? Don't forget, the motion's on page four. Okay?
Okay, Terry Atwell. I move to approve application number SW22-220-PP/FPMC for a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be known as 175th and Edgerton for the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Brian Walker, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those members in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have a date on that, Mr. Pennley?
Thank you. This application will be heard at the Board of County Commissioners meeting on September 1st, 2022 in this room, the board hearing room at 111 South Cherry Street at 9 o'clock in the morning, and that's a Thursday. The meeting will be available for viewing and participation in person and also broadcast via Zoom. Please be sure to visit the board webpage for instructions on how to sign up to speak if you would like to participate via Zoom, and also visit the board's website a couple days in advance to make sure that those options still remain. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Application number SW22-225-CUP-GA, Conditional Use Permit 16199 Gardner East Road. Have a presentation on that?
Thank you. Karen Miller with the Planning Department. This application has been made by Brian and Penny Blank, and for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure to construct an approximately 2,900 square foot accessory building with two covered porches at about 400 square feet, in addition to a 650 square foot open-sided lean-to. This will be on their property in which they reside. They currently reside on the single-family home on the lot, and this is a five-acre lot. And you can see on this aerial that this is close to Gardner Lake. It's generally at the southeast tip of the lake. And you can also see that the property, which is outlined in blue, is located within a strip of large lots from about three acres to about 10 acres with a variety of zoning from RUR zoning to various residential zonings. And it's sandwiched in between two areas of higher density parcels at a more urban density with lots less than one acre. To the east of the property, adjacent to the property, is Copper Springs Subdivision, located within the city of Gardner. This line here is the city limits of Gardner. And also around Gardner are the Gardner Lake lots generally. And here is a closer view of the applicant's property outlined in blue. Here's the applicant's residence. Here is the general location proposed for the detached accessory building. It's proposed to be 50 feet from the north property line and 50 feet from the east property line. The building will be located about 600 feet from the nearest residence to the north, about 110 feet from the nearest residence to the east. And also note the dense tree line following this eastern property line. And then also about 500 feet to the nearest property to the south. And also notice in this aerial, the large amount of cover by thick woods in the area. Here is a zoning map, and you can see a little bit more clearly the zoning and the sizes of this strip of large acre lots, starting with about three acres and going to more than 10. And this is the quarry here, but the 10-acre lot is right here. And then you can see the Copper Springs subdivision and then the Gardner Lake lots. And also just one second. I think I skipped something. There we go. Here is the elevation of the proposed building. It is proposed to be built with metal siding and roofing on a concrete slab. It will be enhanced with two covered porches located on the west side of the building and a lean-to running along the east side of the building. It will be enhanced with a pitched roof with windows on the east and south sides of the building. It's proposed to be a natural earth tone color that is similar to the existing house with a lighter tan or copper toned trim and a darker roof. The building is anticipated or proposed to be used for personal storage, for example, trailers and lawn equipment, workspace, like home projects and vehicle maintenance, and a pet space for a family dog. The purpose of this building is to improve the property's appearance and to remove clutter from the attached garage. And as I mentioned earlier, it's proposed to be set back 50 feet from the north and east property lines. And in the area, there are several similar accessory buildings. They're located on these larger lots. And I'm going to show you a series of three pictures of these accessory buildings. This is the first accessory building. It's immediately to the south of the property, and it's about something like about 2,400 square feet. And then these two buildings are southwest of the subject property. And the top building is approximately 2,500 square feet. And then the bottom building here is approximately 4,000 square feet. And these are the general locations of these buildings we just looked at. This red star is the proposed location of the accessory building and the applicant's home. And here are the three similar accessory buildings. And with that, I'll conclude with my recommendation. Planning staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow an oversized accessory building to be constructed and used on the subject property, subject to stipulations. And I'll point out one stipulation. Number two on page 12 is the oversized accessory building shall be used only for accessory uses permitted in the underlying zoning district and shall not be used in conjunction with a business or commercial activity. And so we feel that that's important to make sure that this continues to blend in with the surrounding neighborhood and not have a commercial character. On page 13 of the staff report are the reasons for a recommendation of approval. Number one is the proposed accessory building associated with an existing single-family home would be consistent with the residential zoning and uses of nearby properties to the north and south. The five-acre subject parcel is located in a strip of large lots ranging from three to 10 acres with a variety of rural and residential zoning districts, many of which are accompanied by accessory buildings, and several of these buildings are similar in size and construction to the proposed building. The second reason is that the proposed accessory building is compatible with the large lot residential character of the neighborhood to the north and south. The proposed accessory building will be well-screened and buffered from surrounding parcels and houses. It will be articulated with porches and a sloped roof, and it will coordinate with the color scheme of the existing house and have a size, design, and construction similar to the accessory buildings to the south and southwest of the subject parcel. And for the zoning board's use, if they're interested, on page 13 is also a suggested motion. And I'll also mention that I received phone calls from two members of the public. They were interested in several parts of the proposal. One inquiry was concerned about whether or not there would be commercial uses in the building or on the property, and no, there's a stipulation prohibiting that. And another person was concerned about the tree line along the east property line. They thought that was a good screen, that it provided some good rural character and natural character. And so I confirmed with the applicant that those trees will not be cut down for the construction of this property. And if you measure it, the property is set back 50 feet from the east property line, and that's more than enough to maintain that tree line. And, you know, the only thing would be is perhaps some maintenance, perhaps cutting a few limbs off if they start brushing against the building. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, do any members of the zoning board have questions for Ms. Miller? I don't have any. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant, you can make a presentation if you'd like, or you can just agree with what was presented by planning staff? Do any members of the zoning board have any questions for the applicant?
Terry Atwell, I have a question for the applicant. On here, it's set as a 10-year term. Is there a reason why there's only a 10-year term, or our board typically kind of goes 20?
Yeah, this is Brian Blank. If there's an extended term, then I would definitely be willing to accept a longer term. I assume that 10 years may be the standard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Sir, just go ahead and step up here to the podium and just state your name, please. And address for the record.
Jeff Flannery, 16204 South Canton Street, Gardner, Kansas, 66030. I'm the property just to the east. Wondering about the tree line. There's basically, at this point, they've cleared some. We've cleared some. And so there's basically just one set of trees at the property line. So in the wintertime, there's not really any cover from this area, so it will be the, what I see, my backyard. The other question I had was about the flood statement. I know that we have a lot of water in that neighborhood. The parcel, two properties to the north of me, is a retaining pond because of a lot of the runoff. And I know I've seen a lot of water on their property. I'm a little concerned where all this extra water is going to go if it's not in their yard where I think the proposed building is going to be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller, do you have anything to add to that, reference the water, or I'm sure there's a study on that?
Yes, I do. And I'm going to attempt to pull up. I got it. Here's the retaining pond. Here's the general location of the the building, and here's the drainage way. From, it goes generally from this subdivision through this drainage and towards the lake. And I talked extensively with our stormwater engineer with Public Works to see if there would be any kind of effect on this drainage situation upon a construction of this building. And there will not be, you know, if any negligible. And this is sufficiently, you know, out of this drainage way. And that any kind of drainage caused by this will not affect this subdivision. All the water will be going this way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any further questions, sir? Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Further questions by the zoning board of staff or applicant? Okay, this time we'll close the public comments. Is there any discussion?
Terry Atwell, other than I think we should up the term to 20 Terry Atwell, other than I think we should up the term to twenty years. And since we have members of the public here, just so you guys know, if there ever did arise an issue, all you have to do is call the planning department. They're there to help. There are rules and regulations. You know, if he didn't follow the stipulations, there are recourses that can be done. So don't feel like if something arises that you're helpless, you can always call the planning department. So, you know, keep their number handy. But we know he's gonna do a great job at maintaining it and stuff. So yeah, I would like to move that to the twenty years. And then one other comment, I think, Sean, we probably haven't mentioned the planning commission is going to be taking up oversized buildings on smaller lots. We're going to try to come up with some new regulations. So hopefully maybe some of these things won't be coming to us in the future. But I didn't know if.
Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. Yes, we have, staff has begun researching this issue regarding the existing regulations concerning oversized accessory buildings and what would be permitted by right versus what would be required with conditional use permit. We have not presented any information yet to the planning commission, but we do intend to do that. And that's going to be on the upcoming work schedule. We assume there'll be regulations we propose. But at this time, still follow the same regulations, but we do expect a change to this in the near future for changes to accessory buildings.
Okay, thank you for the information.
So I just have the twenty-year change.
Okay, yeah, Darren Schaefer, I don't have an issue with the twenty-year term on that. Any other discussion by the board?
None.
Okay, somebody would like to make that motion, please?
Donna Getzmann, I move to approve a conditional use permit to allow an oversized accessory structure on the subject property for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by the staff. And also amending the motion to add the permit to be allowed for twenty years instead of ten years.
Terry Atwell, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those members in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion passes. Can we get a date on that, please?
This application will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on September first twenty-twenty-two in this room, the board hearing room at one-eleven South Cherry Street at nine-thirty in the morning. This will be available in person and also broadcast and via Zoom. The instructions for signing up to speak are on the Board of County Commissioners webpage. And please look a day or two beforehand to make sure that those options for in-person and Zoom are still available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Final application this evening. Number SW two-two-dash-two-two-A-dashPP slash FPGA preliminary and final plat three-six-six-six-six, West Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street. Ms. Wickland, do you have a presentation?
Diane Wickland, Planning Department. I would like to enter in the staff report into the record, dated July twentieth, twenty-twenty-two into the record. Chris and Sarah Haig are the landowners. And the site address is three-six-six-six, West Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street, which is located on the north side of Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street, just east of Edgerton Road. The property has RUR rural zoning district. And there is a single-family residence and two accessory structures on site. So the applicant proposes plating a thirty-three-point-eight-acre parcel into two residential lots to be known as One Horse Ranch. Lot one will be eleven-point-six-four acres in size and lot two will be twenty-one-point-four-two acres in size. Both proposed lots will have frontage and direct access on Two Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street. And both lots comply with the minimum street furniture requirements and no new streets are proposed. And so here on the screen is an aerial view of the subject property, which is outlined in blue. And here's an aerial view of the surrounding area. Again, subject property is outlined in blue, as you can see. Here's a copy of the preliminary plat showing the existing home and pond. So lot two has the residence on it and then lot one is vacant. And then here's a copy of the final plat. Just a few highlights as we reviewed the minimum infrastructure requirements. There was a site distance study that was submitted by the applicant and it has been accepted by the Public Works Department, which shows and states that there is an area that complies with site distance requirements for a new driveway entrance on a proposed lot one, which is the vacant lot. The preliminary and final stormwater management plan and the preliminary and final stormwater quality management plans have both been submitted and reviewed and accepted by the Public Works Department. As stated earlier, proposed lot two has an existing residence on it and it's currently served by an onsite septic system. Lot one can also be served by a septic system. And in terms of water supply, the property is served by Water District Seven. And so in summary, the proposed plat does meet all of the minimum infrastructure requirements. In regard to the rural comprehensive plan, the plan indicates the subject property to be in the rural policy area. The rural policy area allows a density of one dwelling unit per ten acres. So the proposed density of two lots on thirty-three acres is in keeping with that future land use and density recommendation. And so therefore, the final preliminary plat is in keeping with the plan. In terms of the uses and character of the nearby properties, as you saw on the aerial views, rural zoning does surround the subject property on all sides. And the character of the area is best described as very low-density rural residential with some agricultural uses. And the surrounding parcels are zoned rural and range from seven to eighty acres in size in the surrounding area. So the proposed lots meet the requirements of our zoning and subdivision regulations and are compatible with the uses and characters of nearby properties. In the back of your packet is a memo from the Public Works Department. And in terms of comments from the Building Codes Department, the building official did have some comments that due to a lack of fire flow and fire hydrants in the area, that the fire flow may be reduced to two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute. And that, and provided that no other residences shall be constructed closer than a hundred feet from any other residence. And that's pretty typical on properties that have smaller water lines. And then the other thing that they have to do is just get a letter from the fire district that they can verify that they can shuttle two-hundred and, at least two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute. And so in the recommended stipulations are some of those comments that will be required for the plat to meet those requirements. In regard to Water District Seven, they just, they had some following comments that are in the staff report that there is that two-inch water main along Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street and that that can provide domestic service to the vacant lot. And they do provide service to the existing home. So with that, staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat for the two-lot plat. And subject to the stipulations listed on page seven and eight of the staff report. And the reason for recommendation is that the plats do comply with the county zoning and subdivision regulations and the minimum infrastructure requirements. And there's also a proposed motion on page eight for the board's reference, if you want to use that. I think with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wickland. Board members have any questions for staff? We have an applicant present. Okay, you may make statements if you'd like, or if you agree with what she said, that's fine. Any members have any questions for Mr. Haig? None noted, thank you. What about public? Do we have any public here to have any comments? Okay, none noted. Any discussion by the board, or would somebody like to make a motion? I don't have any discussion. I don't have any questions.
Brian Walker, I move that the board approve application SW for a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be known as One Horse Ranch for the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Rebecca Barton, second.
Mr. Walker made a motion and Becky Barton, I got you for a second. All those members in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign? Okay, motion has passed. And can we get a date on that, please?
Yes, so this will go to the Board of County Commissioners on September first, nine-thirty a.m. here in this room, one-eleven South Cherry.
Thank you. Okay, in reference to other business, I believe we do have a few things, Mr. Pendley, to discuss this evening.
Yes, thank you Chairman Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. For our next meeting on August twenty-fourth, we will have some cases that were continued and new cases. But in addition, Mr. Jay Leipzig, I think, wanted to address the board to let you know about some draft bylaws that we're working on that we will be bringing forward to the board and then also talk about possible election of officers. Remember to Jay.
Good evening, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Just a quick update on the status of the bylaws that we've mentioned before. As you may recall, the planning commission just recently adopted bylaws along with, we've been going through the oaths of office. So we're in the process of going through the bylaws procedures with all of the zoning boards as well. So staff is working on a draft version of the bylaws for this Southwest zoning board. We'd like to present those to you in your next packet for discussion during your August meeting. You don't have to particularly, if you choose to take action at the August meeting, that's fine. But it really just a point of getting in front of you, letting me review them and discussing them at that point. And that's really all I had. I just wanted to be aware of that. We're working with Southwest. The next one will be the Southeast zoning board. And then we'll finish up with the Northwest zoning board. And our goal is to have that finished by the end of the year, if we can. And I think we're on track to do that.
Thank you, sure. Mr. Pendley, did you have anything further?
Nothing further than just to please let us know if any of the board members will be absent on that meeting on August twenty-fourth, since we would like to have a full attendance if possible for the review of bylaws and then election of officers. So please let us know if anyone is not available.
It will do. Darren Schaefer, I'll make a statement here. I want to make sure everybody understands. Last couple of meetings I've missed, I've just been so busy. So I told Mr. Pendley, I don't know how much longer I'm going to be on the zoning board. But by all means, if somebody is interested in taking over the chair position, I'm all about opportunity. So if you want that opportunity, that chance, go for it. Go for it.
Terry Atwell, you do a great job, Darren, so.
Thanks, shoes.
Yeah, Terry Atwell, I do have one other form of business that I would like to bring forward. And that is, I would like to personally thank Darren Schaefer, who retired after twenty-seven years serving our county on the Sheriff's Department. And I not only appreciate your service on this zoning board, but knowing what law enforcement goes through in these days, I really want to thank you for your twenty-seven years of service and congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you. It's very nice of you.
And county staff would echo those comments. We appreciate that. We also appreciate the work you've done, Mr. Schaefer, and serving this board. Been wonderful chair and congratulations on your retirement.
I appreciate it. And thankfully, all the tears came out on Friday at my ceremony. I don't have any more. So thank you. That's very nice of you. Okay, if there's no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn this evening?
Brian Walker, second.
All right, all those members in favor of adjournment, aye? Okay, thank you all for being here. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening.